Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August the 11th, 2020. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, will you take the role, please? Is Kylie here? Anybody?
Can you hear me, Chair?
I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. Supervisor Howard?
Present.
Supervisor Cowan?
Here.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Here.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Here.
Chair Hemmingson?
Here. Okay, at this time, we're going to take a moment of reflection. And now, if you'll all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Okay, introduction of new employees. Do we have any? Okay. Okay. Is everybody froze up? I don't see anybody moving but me.
You're here with me?
You're with me? Okay, I got Chris. Joel, anything? Report from closed session?
Nothing to report.
Okay, at this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda. Any such items? Are we having, are we having internet issues? Everybody seems to be frozen up on my end. See, is everybody still there?
I'm here.
Here.
All right. I guess we have no items. Deletions or corrections. At this time, then, we're going to receive brief announcements, reports relative to the county programs and projects. And we're going to start with Supervisor Berkowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be very brief. This has been a busy two weeks with both sides of the controversy over the two billboards located at the south of town. One side wants them to be taken down because they're offensive to them, and the other side wants them to stay because they reflect their values. Now that the billboard has been defaced, the arguments are becoming even more and more heated on both sides. Lastly, I continue to hear from constituents and businesses about when the county will return to normal with businesses being able to open up. I hope that Dr. Ray Wong will give us an update at this very meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along with Supervisor Hemmingson, I participated in an RSTP funding discussion with the Community Development Department over some concerns with expenditures and allocations associated with spending in the city and the county. Also participated in discussion with Tri-Agency with Supervisor Hemmingson. And then later had a discussion with Tabra Layton and Larry D.P. concerning visibility and issues around the intersection of Elk Valley Crossroads and Highway 199, a longstanding area of concern for us. We've been attempting to get Caltrans to move some signage so the site distances, as you're heading north on Highway 199 to Elk Valley Crossroad, those size distances are longer. So people have a better chance of getting across that intersection without having a near miss or a collision. Also had a discussion with Joel and members of USDA on issues concerning Tri-Agency. And continued discussion on Paulo Adini Nation and specific that item is on our agenda today. Had discussions with Alan Winogroda over issues of vegetation at the Klamath River Boat Ramp. It's my understanding Alan and team will be down there this week to open it up. So folks have great access to sports fishing on the Klamath River this season. And I want to end the discussion that it's too bad our fair didn't happen this year, but I'm super proud of our community coming together for all the kids and their fair animals. I know this is a major event to raise funds for our children and their future college careers and other endeavors in farming. More than happy to help support those kids and the sailor animals this year. And that's all I have to report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Roger?
Yes, thank you. I took a few days off to visit some family. And upon my return, I was advised by some folks of the two controversial billboards erected by the California Endowment. I observed both of those signs. One's located at the harbor, the other one's on South 101 entering into Crescent City. I was alarmed by the monikers emblazoned on the masks, but I was gratified to see that the masking protocol was being reinforced by the California Endowment. I think Sawn's messages on the faces of those on the billboard would have been sufficient. So it's good advice for folks to mask up and follow the protocols so that we keep our area minimum COVID exposure. I wasn't happy with the political messages being communicated, including the ending of racism with a direct inference that racism is the sole province of Caucasian folks and the Black Lives Matter moniker. I found Black Lives Matter moniker, which claims nonviolence, inclusivity, embracing of all efforts to correct the effects of perceived racism, in fact, practices a much different mission, which is intolerant, offensive, insulting, divisive, anti-family, and anti-Semitic. Fact is, all lives matter, folks, including black, white, yellow, red, brown, and any other pigment in your one skin color. It's disheartening that the California Endowment has closely associated itself with Black Lives Matter, which negates all the good it has done in Del Norte County over the past two decades. I hope the Endowment rethinks its association. And for the record, so as not to upset my colleagues and give them heart attacks, I've made my comments to and about the Endowment as an individual. My comments are mine and mine alone. On another issue, it was Week Five of the Pride and Community Program. Volunteers are meeting every Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. in the Battery Point parking lot to assist city in removing overgrowth and weeds growing from the sidewalks and curbs on city-controlled property. Volunteers with or without weed trimmers, flat-faced shovels, pickers, and gloves are welcome and appreciated. We encourage you to wear long pants, clothes and shoes if you plan to participate. And that will be tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the Battery Point parking lot, Lighthouse parking lot. And finally, I welcomed a new city restaurant to Del Norte County, La Capella's Italian delicatessen. Will officially open Saturday, August 15th. Met the Luhan's, wonderful people, and their menu looks absolutely delicious. La Capella's is located off the S-Curve at 105 N Street. And prices are very moderate, and I hope you'll frequent that new restaurant in town. And that is my report.
Thank you, Chairman. After our last meeting, I had a meeting with one of my constituents and neighbor regarding neighborhood issues, as well as some parking issues and some homeless. Had a phone call with Dana Gilport, again about homeless and potential housing and moving forward with transitional as well as permanent housing for the homeless. We had a behavioral health meeting. Had a phone meeting with Beth. She's one of our developers for the No Place Like Home funding that the county is seeking. Went over some questions and concerns and just overall about the program and what the developers' part and what they'll be doing for us. Had a meeting with Heather Snow where we discussed the jail project and the homeless programs and funding sources and upcoming projects. Tended the Republican Women's Monthly Meeting. We had an Airport Authority meeting. And yes, flights are way, way down, but definitely coming up from where they were. And hopefully, that'll be an upward trend as things slowly get back to normal. And had actually a couple conversations with Senator McGuire's A. Jason Lyles regarding prison numbers with COVID, along with other items. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I had several, several meetings. As Supervisor Howard said, we had a meeting with staff on RSTP funding. And also, Mr. Howard said we're talking about the Tri-Agency meeting. Had a future facilities meeting. Did a gender review. I had a webinar on solar loggers, which is a device that monitors fishing vessels. So we had a webinar on that. Had a focus group meeting via the Zoom on nearshore fisheries. A lot to do with how the MPAs have affected the fisheries. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority Supervisor Cowan met. And I am the Director now of the North Coast Cable Committee. We meet in Eureka. Has to do with the communications cable that's coming into Eureka. Eureka, yeah, Eureka, out at the Samoa area. And that was about it for me. I'd like to take a minute or two to clarify for the community my feelings regarding recent statements made to the Board of Supervisors as a whole and Roger Gitlin in particular. Public commenters called out Roger for his callous and ignorant social media posts and statements regarding recent nationwide issues. While myself, Supervisor Howard, and Supervisor Cowan clearly indicated our disagreement with his statements and actions, there was sentiment that we should somehow stop Roger from continuing his divisive ways. To be abundantly clear, Roger has the legal right to say and post his personal opinion, which he's done. That's his right under our Constitution, and I agree and support that 100%. Our free speech right should never be infringed upon. However, he does not speak for this board and certainly does not represent the opinion of others that sit on this board. As an elected official, he is placed in a position of authority by voters in his district to work for our community. Only the voters can replace him. However, he is not running for office and will not be off this board at the end of the year unless he decides to step down. Our board, accepting Roger, recently made a policy statement by passing a proclamation in support of equality and accountability in this community. Supervisors Howard, Cowan, Berkowitz, and myself voted yes. Roger voted present. By our board rules, is the same as a no vote. Roger refused to put his name on a document that outlines the board's position on inclusion and tolerance. The board's opposition to ignorance and intolerance and a promise to practice patience, kindness, compassion, and respect for others is now well documented, except for Roger. While this board cannot remove Roger from his elected position, we can, and I am stating my opposition to his divisive actions and hurtful comments. And I hope the rest of the board agrees. Since I realize it is highly unlikely Roger will step down and he will continue to cause his run in his short time left, I would hope the residents of our community see what the majority of the board stands for and focus on the positive work being done by our board and our Del Norte County employees. Thank you for your time. So we are going to move on at this point and look at the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and that'd be items one through 11, Chair.
Yes, thank you. Have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second, and I am opening it up for public comment. Kylie, is there any public comment on the consent agenda? I can't hear if you're saying anything. Are you telling, are you saying there's no public comment, or there is?
He said, "No, I saw your head shaking."
I, I see your head shaking, but you're, for some reason, we're not getting any verbal communication.
Can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, sorry, it said we're unmuted on our end. We're having technical issues. I do not have any public comment written or online. Sorry about that.
I would like to add that there are a couple people dialed in. So if you're dialing through the phone and you want to raise your hand to make public comment, you have to press star nine on your phone. And that'll indicate to us that you want to talk, and we can invite you to talk. So if you're dialed in through a phone, star nine will raise your hand.
Okay, thank you for that, Dan. Kylie, you want to look again and see if anybody raised their hand?
Yes. We do have two raising their hand now. Give me one moment.
Okay.
All I see is telephone number 951-7325. You are on, you need to unmute your mic. You're good to go.
I don't know what, what is that noise?
It usually means there's background computer audio on.
Okay, hang on a sec. I guess it's because I got, I got my phone on and my computer. So the comment I want to make, let me turn this down. Jerry Hemmingson's comments about Roger Gitlin and, and his divisive comments. It depends on who you are, whether you think his comments are divisive or not. That billboard is extremely divisive. I don't have a problem with Black Lives Matter or black people or wearing masks, but what Black Lives Matter has become, if you look at Portland and Seattle and the burning and the rioting and the defending the police, it's not really a good thing. And I actually contacted Outfront Media with, about the billboards, about putting up a billboard. And I was told that whatever design we choose to put up a billboard has to be approved by them, and there can be nothing political, which is pretty strange to me because that billboard down there is definitely political. And I just found out that, I know that Del Norte County traditionally votes Republican. So there are more registered Republicans in this town than there are Democrats. And I guess, you know, that that billboard is very divisive and I, I don't think anybody should have defaced it, although all they did was, was spray paint over the BLM. And on a local discussion page, I made the comment that the Republican headquarters has been spray painted a few times, I think three times, and had to have been painted over. And, well, I guess that, I guess that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Who are we speaking with, Chairman?
My name is Susan Kozak, K-O-Z-A-K.
Thank you, Susan. Your name is not through at the start.
Okay, thank you.
Kylie, you have another comment?
Yes, give me one moment. Linda, you are on.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Board. Couple of things. One is that we've got a lot of tourists in town visiting. And down on South Beach, there seems to be a couple of problems with dogs not on leashes. And people are having to use pepper spray to defend their dogs. Excuse me. The second thing is, is, you know, I understand building, that the California Endowment is building healthy communities. And when they first posted the, the billboards, you know, it was neutral. There was nothing written, there was no political agenda. But when they started painting or put little quotes or whatever you want to say, whatever they stand for, then it became a political issue. And it's no longer building healthy communities. It's dividing communities, and it's causing a lot of disruption. I was at the river this weekend, and there were people that were taking notice of that. It's like they came from big cities to get away from all that madness. And now, what's the first thing that hits them when they come into the harbor is they see that sign, and they're like, oh, my God, what can we expect here? So I think, you know, why don't you wipe out those masks and wear the mask? Because that's advertising healthy communities. We don't need political agendas on the mask. Thank you very much.
Okay. Kylie, is there any more public comment on the consent agenda items?
Chair, I'm just going to give it a couple more seconds. Yes, one second. Craig Strong, you are on.
Hi, yeah, I'm not sure if this is the right place or it's the following public comment period. But following up on Linda's comment on the unleashed dogs at South Beach is a proposal I had put forth at Future Facilities just two weeks ago, approved, bringing before the board about having dog waste bags and receptacles out at Point St. George. You may have heard of this. But I, I thought it was going to be on today's agenda, but apparently it's not. So I want to make you aware of it. And all, all we're seeking is, as individuals, is permission to put them on the existing county guardrails as a pilot project to see if, if they're used correctly. If people are using the bags and putting them in the trash. And then if it works, if it's good, then we could look at more permanent things and perhaps having them in other places in the city. Let's see. Yeah, so just wanted to make you aware of that, and thank you for your time.
Good luck. Thank you. Anybody else, Kylie? Consent agenda items only, public comment?
I'm not seeing any more at this time.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members? Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes, and I will recuse myself on item number six, the organic inspection item.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, it is 10:25, so we will open it up for public comment. Comment on things that are not on the agenda. If you are commenting on an item that is on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until we pick up that item. Is there any public comment, Kylie?
Yes.
Or, okay.
I don't have any written public, public comment. But I do have a few coming up online, so give me just one moment.
Okay.
Del Norte Republicans, you are on.
Hi, this is Karen Sanders, and I am the Chair of the Del Norte Republicans. I live in the county. We have a proclamation I'd like to read to the Board of Supervisors and to the community in regards to the events over the last few months. Proclamation to Del Norte County Board of Supervisors concerning public behavior and decorum. Resolved by the Del Norte Republican Central Committee of California encourages policies and best practices that foster good public behavior and decorum by government, law enforcement, residents, and guests. Whereas, our nation was brought to a sudden halt with lockdown orders from the state and the local health departments in March 2020 to mitigate the effects of COVID-19, causing closures of schools and businesses, rise in unemployment, and strife and restlessness within the world. Whereas, our nation has experienced lawful citizen protests, which have been overshadowed by violence, vandalism, destruction of historical monuments, arson, and even casualties following the death of George Floyd. Whereas, the tension of protests coupled with the COVID-19 pandemic lockdown has created a perfect storm for domestic terrorists, anarchists, and common criminals to take advantage of the situation to create mayhem and fear. Whereas, Del Norte County should be concerned with all crimes that affect every citizen in addition to isolated incidences involving law enforcement. Whereas, the Del Norte Republican Central Committee recognizes and appreciates the collaboration and conduct of local government leaders, law enforcement, and social organizations to allow and conduct peaceful protests. Whereas, the Del Norte Republican Central Committee supports safety, health, and responsible governments on behalf of Del Norte County residents. Whereas, groups, individuals, elected bodies who pander to organizations that use bullying tactics are a disservice to the community and limit the ability to resolve issues in civil manner. Whereas, demonizing in any form is divisive and solves nothing. And instead, we should work together with dignity for Del Norte County. Whereas, Del Norte Republican Central Committee encourages individuals to take personal responsibility, to remain civil toward each other's differing opinions, and do no harm to others' possessions or property. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Del Norte County Republican Central Committee encourages policies and best practices that foster good public behavior and decorum by government, law enforcement, residents, and guests.
Thank you. Three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, is there any other public comment, Kylie?
Yes. Linda, you are on.
Okay, thank you. Linda Sutter County. Chair Hemmingson, I'm a little concerned because I noticed the city had a presentation of why they want to increase the sales tax. But I have not seen the county give that presentation. And here we are just hours away from submitting arguments for and against the city county. So I, you know, I I'm sorry that the county slipped that through the cracks, but apparently you want to be connected with the city in your decision to raise sales tax. So the arguments are going to be what the city, the same as the city arguments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment Kylie?
I'm just going to give it a couple more seconds Chair.
Sure.
And I'm not seeing any more public comment at this time.
Okay, we will close the public comment period and we will move on to our 10:30 timed item, which is an update from Dr. Warren Raywold. Our Delnor County Public Health Officer. Dr. Raywold?
Chair, I'm not seeing Dr. Raywald is logged on. I did email him about the presentation last week. He never got back to me. I'm not sure what the issue is at this time. I don't know if we want to just maybe move on to something else. Maybe he'll come in a little bit later. I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, if he shows up, we'll we'll bring him in. So we'll move on to item number 15, general government. Introduced by title only, an ordinance making non-substantive technical corrections and renumbering of the county code and removing inoperable chapters, two waiving further reading and three set a hearing date on August 25th, 2020 to adopt the ordinance and four designate county council to prepare a summary of the ordinance for publication as requested by county council. Joel, did you want to speak to this at all?
Yeah, you know, it's it's not a very complicated ordinance, you know, it lays out in bullet points exactly what is being changed. Nothing of substance. Nobody's rights or obligations are changing. We had some issues with the parking ordinance numbering that's prevented from being enforceable. And some other typos and small things that I wanted to throw in there since we were coming forward and going to pay for publication anyway. So if there's any questions about it, I can answer those. Two things that might kind of grab attention are the there's two chapters of our of our tax title in the county code that were approved by the board of supervisors, but never by the voters. So they've just been sitting there inoperable. And with this new tax coming forward, I figure it's a good time to get those out of there to reduce confusion. So if any questions about those, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions from board members?
Yes, Joel, I have a quick question for you with regard to the parking ordinance addressing the issue of vehicle villages. This was back in May, we passed this ordinance. So giving the highway patrol and all local law enforcement to enforce the 72 hour ruling. Once this bookkeeping cosmetic issues are remedied and this is passed, when will this ordinance in fact go into effect?
So the ordinance itself is actually in effect now. It's just misnumbered and therefore it can't be put on the website. It's kind of problematic to enforce an ordinance that you can't really point to in the county code. And that's why it hasn't been enforced. But these technical corrections will go into effect 30 days after it's adopted at the next board meeting. So for practical purpose, I think the answer to your question is about the end of September.
Thank you very much.
Any other question for members?
Chairman, I'd like to move to introduce by title only an ordinance making non-substantive technical corrections and renumerating of the county code and removing inoperable chapters. Waive further reading and set a hearing on August 25th, 2020 to adopt the ordinance and designate county council to prepare a summary of the ordinance for publication.
Second.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment Kylie?
Chair, I'm just going to give it a couple more seconds. I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from board members? Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 14, which is our 10:35 timed item, which is a tribal state gaming compact presentation by the Talladega Nation.
Chair, may I, Dr. Raywald is actually on now?
Okay, well, we'll go to Dr. Raywald then. Dr. Raywald, do you want to give us an update?
Good morning.
Morning.
Hang on just a second. I think it'll be okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So update for today, things have changed a bit over the last week, as you probably all know. I mean, I could talk about the national and state statistics a bit, but I think more interest is in what's going on locally. We definitely picked up some cases last week and over the weekend. Our case count is 100 now. I think we have 11 active still. So we picked up about 11 new cases. Roughly a third of them were from travel related, some were community transmission. Roughly about the same amount. About half of them again were directed by us to go get tested. So and most of those were contacts of family members. So you know, a typical kind of story, I guess, for for us in the summer. Not entirely unexpected that we'd see an uptick. Obviously, we also have one case in the hospital. We've been expecting this kind of change, this kind of disease activity for a while and it looks like it's finally starting to emerge here in August. I think it really is a big surge. It's definitely more than what we've seen for the previous month or so. So I think probably we're going to see more of this as time goes on. Expect to see more cases, probably more cases in the hospital. In the next few weeks, we'll probably see more of a pattern and and have a better understanding of where we are in terms of disease activity. So it's unfortunate, but it's not unexpected. You know, our data projections and our modeling that we've been going by have been kind of predicting this really since June. So we've been kind of waiting and and expecting a change for a while. So I think we're finally starting to see it. And everybody just needs to be mindful that this is kind of part and parcel of what COVID-19 does in a community eventually. And I think we're finally finally starting to see the effect. And you know, a lot of this, we're pretty sure is related to travel in and out of the community. Some of our cases for this last bunch definitely were travelers. And also there are some cases we think were related to travelers coming here. So it works both ways. It's people leaving the county and coming back and and visitors to our community. Which, you know, this is a destination county for for lots of people in the summer. So we expected that. News out at the prison. The inmate population all tested negative, all the ones that they could persuade to take the test, which was nearly everybody. I think the only 35, 45, somewhere in that range of prisoners who refused the test. Which is a really good score. I mean, that's that's a huge number who took it or negative. Still getting kind of trickling results from the second round of testing of the staff. And that remains a disappointment for us. Certain it is a disappointment for them as well. Very frustrating that this company hasn't really met the standard that they expected everyone they'd be able to deliver in terms of turnaround time. Now, some of that is probably not their fault because of the demand on testing statewide and nationwide, but we've seen in other venues that testing time has improved. And I sort of expected that the second round with this with the prison staff would go better. And actually, it seems to have gone worse in terms of turnaround time. So I think they're concerned. I'm we're certainly concerned because we can't really do much with results that are so late. Most of our results, the new cases that we have recorded, those are all reported to us by a different route. So we are still able to do good contact tracing, good case investigation for those cases. Doesn't staff, it's it's still more of a question mark. So are planning on doing some more testing and I guess we'll have to just see what happens with the next go around. But I think there's some some disappointment across the board about the program as put put out by this company that they've contracted with. And I think that's all I had for today. It was a couple of, well, actually, there's a couple of things I wanted to mention because you may have heard, you may hear about this by a different route. You know, after the the state brought out the the new county monitoring plan and counties going on the monitoring list and having further restrictions and the statewide restrictions that came out in mid-July. Some of the local health officers, we decided to to draft a letter to be sent to the state. So we worked on that, composed it. And I think we sent it up to the state last week or maybe even at the end of the previous week. And I know one of the counties that participated has already presented this to their boards. I don't think it's it's news anymore. But we were asked asking for a little bit of flexibility, actually quite a lot of flexibility about indoor dining in particular. Because we thought it was a bit of an over overreach again in terms of the impact like ours and the surrounding counties in Northern California. So we haven't heard anything back. And with the the changeover of the leadership that you probably all heard about this last week. I'm not sure we're going to hear anything back soon about what their opinion is about it, whether they would consider doing this. And the same times, you know, the the same counties, we're also all see, I think we're all starting to see a little bit of an increase in activity. Which is kind of what we expected for the summer. So the timing may not be the ideal, but I just wanted to let you know that it is out there. We put it out there. We kind of came together as a group and and put our opinions down on paper. Sent it to the state state CD page. See what kind of feedback we get. And then the other thing about I wanted to bring to your attention is our our biobot reports. We're considering switching to a different company and maybe starting to do weekly biobot testing. I'm still kind of of two minds about the usefulness of this. I I think the way we're using it right now, it's not particularly helpful because it's too far spaced out. You know, some places are doing this daily or every other day or a couple of times a week. I think it's been good for us to know when our disease activity was really low or essentially zero. I don't foresee that happening again anytime soon. I think the usefulness would be to predict some increases there. There seems to be a pattern or maybe a pattern that an increase in biobot reports suggests that maybe we're going to see an increase in clinical case reporting within a week or two. But it's harder to use that if we're not doing it as frequently as at least a week apart. So we're looking into trying to do that more regular with a different company that actually saves us a little bit of money. So there may be a change in the reporting down the road. And I just want to give you a heads up about that. And then I will entertain any questions.
Okay, any questions from board members?
Dr. Raywald, can you hear me okay?
I sure can.
You know, you had stated, Dr. Raywald, that the county no longer recommends routine testing for non-symptomatic individuals and you've notified local providers. So currently on the website, get yourself tested, big bold print there, COVID-19 testing is recommended for all residents on a regular basis. Sign up and get tested for COVID-19. It's easy, free and confidential. Since routine testing for non-symptomatic individuals is no longer recommended, Dr. Raywald, will you delete the inappropriate recommendations from the county website forthwith?
Sure, we can. In fact, we talked about doing that last week and I don't know why it didn't get changed, but it should, the language should be clearer because the testing recommendation has definitely changed.
Well, it's just a follow up on that. I I think all this testing uses chemicals. I mean, I'm just using a non-medical description and uses supplies and time. And it's not productive. So I think from a standpoint of protocol, maybe symptomatic individuals obviously should be identified and tested, but the non-symptomatic people feel normal and what have you. They should be advised accordingly. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions from board members? Kylie, is there any public comment?
I'm just going to give it a few more seconds Chair. I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Raywald. Appreciate your update. Continue your good work. Thank you.
I thank all of you. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we'll move on to our 10:35 timed item, which is a tribal state gaming compact presentation from the Talladega Nation. Troy?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Just wanted to real quickly thank the thank the board and supervisors for allowing us to take the time to present to you and request for support from the board of supervisors to ratify SB 869. If the board would allow me, I'd like to read a statement from our tribal chairman. I'll just do it then. Can you hear me? All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, honorable chair and board of supervisors, on behalf of the Talladega Nation and its members, I want to extend our thanks and appreciation to you and the board of supervisors for taking time and energy during this current COVID-19 pandemic and public health crisis to provide a letter of support for SB 869. The proposed legislation to ratify the state tribal gaming compact between the state of California and the Talladega Nation. The proposed compact will provide the tribe with the ability to continue the same level of gaming activities under its existing 1999 compact, but adds the ability to offer off-track wagering and is consistent with other recent tribal state gaming compacts in that it provides for annual regulatory assessments, improved labor relations and workers' compensation program as well as environmental mitigation terms. Moreover, it remains consistent with the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act goals of promoting tribal economic development, self-sufficiency and the strong tribal governments ensuring ensuring fair and responsible gaming, free of organized crime and corrupting influences and protecting the gaming as it means of the generation of revenue for the tribe among the other acts purposes. As such, our new compact represents a fair and responsible compromise between the interests of the state of California and those of the tribe. And we see your support in approving SB 869. Ratification of the tribal state gaming compact with the passage of SB 869 will allow the tribe to continue to operate a class three gaming facility in Delnor County in a manner which is consistent and fair and responsible gaming regulations and standards. The tribe will continue to strengthen its local economy by continuing to provide upwards of 250 jobs as well as providing support to local law enforcement, fire, emergency services, as well as other community and regional programs that provide housing, education and health throughout Delnor County region for the benefit of tribal and non-tribal member communities. Tribe comes before you today with no known opposition to its new compact and only mounting support, including support from the other tribes in the region. With no known opposition to its new compact and only mounting support, including support from the other tribes in the region. The tribe would also like to share and express its sincere appreciation to Delmore County Board of Supervisors. For their continued support of the Talladega Dany Nation. And again, thank you for your expeditious support of SB eight sixty nine. And the legislation which would ratify the compact between the state of California and the Talladega Dany Nation. Thank you, Chairperson Leanne McCollum, on behalf of the Tribal Council and the Talladega Dany Nation.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Yeah, I I don't think we have a letter of support on the agenda to. To. Vote on, we can. Depending on what the board feels, I I I'm mildly disappointed that we weren't notified earlier and gotten the information. That we needed to have on changes to the compact. We had a meeting a week or so that really didn't go over. In detail, I I guess the changes, but I I would think there would be. You know, a little more effort put into local cons, local government consultation. Not that I'm opposed to it. Just disappointed in the process a little bit. Board members, questions, comments?
Yes, Hammington.
Yeah, go ahead.
Troy, what is the current status of the compact with the state?
Currently, our, we have a compact that's was ratified for in nineteen ninety nine. That compact is still in place. What we've done is we entered into negotiation with the Governor's Office. Approximately three years ago to start the process of reviewing and in changing the. The into a new compact. The nineteen ninety nine compact is scheduled as a twenty year, so scheduled to, you know, in, you know, at the end of this year. So our timing to get the the new compact is. Is is rather important to to move this forward. Since we started our negotiation, I believe there's been multiple changes at the state level in the Governor's Office and even the Governor. A new governor. So we've had to start over in, you know, our negotiation. So right now where we're at is the Governor and their team have, you know, successfully negotiated. Between the tribe and and the state to come up with a an agreement that. I guess we'll say is agreeable to both parties to be able to move forward. So the Governor signed that compact. And now the the purpose is to move it to the legislative because they have to ratify his signature to that compact. So that's where we are right now.
So you said the Governor has currently signed the compact?
Correct.
And it's the tribal councils hope that. I guess at this point, the board's opinion specific to the compact. Or any communication with the government or Governor is is Nolan Boyd. It would just be communication with the state legislature, specifically the Senate and the Assembly?
If if there's, I guess, that would be true if there's opposition, if you have opposition to, you know, this, the the new compact language, yes.
Yeah, I I'm not entirely sure I have opposition to it. I in the two by two discussion Supervisor Chairman. Jerry Hammington and I communicated with council members and yourself with. We obviously liked some of the provisions in the compact related to workers' rights. We thought that was a big step by the tribe to take action on those areas. I know, as you specifically stated, it was something that you saw coming forward in three previous. Gaming compacts out of the Southern California. So it looked like a fairly progressive stance. Being taken by the state of California. So obviously that reflects well that Talladega Dany Nation is also. Trying to take up some of those issues within their compact this round.
Thank you.
When do you expect it? I mean, what what floor of the the Assembly or the Senate, where do you see it landing first?
I believe it will probably go through the Senate first.
And the council would be specifically requesting at this time for our next agenda to have. A letter of support to both bodies. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else got questions or comments? So at this time, it's the consensus that we want staff to look at a letter of support. For this compact to put be put on our next agenda.
I'm good with that.
I would also be good with that. Supervisor Hammington, I'd also like to know if staff has had an opportunity to read through the. Hundred and forty seven plus pages of this compact and has any current concerns that we could address with right this time.
Jay?
We have gone through it. It is a quick turnaround and going through a compact and coming up with those issues, having those discussions with the board is really difficult. With the time constraints that we're under. You know, the county's involvement is primarily going to be in the. Chapter eleven section of the MOU regarding tribal impacts off reservation. And there are provisions in there for us to be able to comment on those. Those tend to be, and we've seen those with the Urock travel compact in the past. Those tend to be where we can enter into the discussions and. Come up with some solutions if we. Believe that there are impacts or if the tribal environmental impact document demonstrates that there are impacts off reservation. And those tend to be our biggest concern whenever there's a large development project.
Thank you, Jay.
So I guess we have consensus, Jay, to work on some sort of a support letter?
If, yeah, the board has consensus, it would be a direction to staff to prepare that letter and forward that on. And I believe from what Mr. Ralston has said, the turnover is by this Friday. Is that correct, Troy?
Correct.
Yeah, I I'm not sure that could happen, but why don't we get it together and we'll go from there.
If you direct staff to do it, we would do it based on this conversation and to the appropriate bodies. And it would be a letter of support at that point. And we would pass that on without coming back to the board if the board so chooses.
Sorry, Chairman. Jay, do you feel there needs to be further discussion with Troy and staff specific to those concerns in section eleven? Or do you feel at this point, given your discussions and preliminary discussions with county council, that. It'd be okay for the board to move forward with support at this time?
I think my my personal opinion on this one is with the Governor signing the compact at this point. Any substantial discussions and changes are probably off the board and. It will be passed on to the legislation without our support or with our support, but. As we go through this, it's it's relatively consistent from what we can see with what we've analyzed before with the Urock tribe. And like I said, our our involvement as a county government is limited in regards to the compacts in the first place. And has been over the years. But focusing on that section eleven, I think we would be in pretty good shape to be able to sit down with the tribe. And work out any issues that may pop up with any of their large developments. And when I say large developments, it's because what's ever triggered by, you know, whatever triggers the tribal environmental impact document. Which is going to be a relatively large development in most cases.
Chair, we're seeking a motion for that, for a support letter then to go forward with. The board's discussion today.
I think. I just think we need consensus or direction. Counselor, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So just to expand a little bit on on what the tribal impact document is for everybody's sake, it would be. Impacts on air quality, water resources, traffic, public services, hazardous materials and noise. So that that's what's specifically called out in section eleven.
Okay, how how often do these contacts come up for Reno?
This one's twenty five years. I believe the last one was twenty five years also, Troy.
Twenty.
Twenty.
So. For twenty five years, we we have no input on any of those items that you just talked about?
No, that section specifically requires that. Those those issues with the tribal document. They may be addressed through it, the process that's outlined in the compact. So that requires that there's posting and notifications and outreach.
Okay, so if there is no opposition, then I will direct staff to. Write up a support letter for AB, is it AB eight sixty nine? Is that right, Troy?
SB.
SB, SB eight sixty nine, thank you. Okay, well, let's see, I guess I should have taken public comment, maybe. Kylie, is there any public comment?
I'm just, I'm going to give it a couple more seconds. Chair, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, so Jay, direction is to prepare a letter of support for SB eight sixty nine.
Okay.
Okay, and we will move on to item number sixteen, which is to approve authorized staff to remove stop controls. On the Cooper Avenue approaches. Of the Cooper Avenue at Glenn Street intersection as requested by Assistant County Engineer, Rosanna.
Cooper Avenue between El Dorado and Inyo Street. And within those limits is the intersection of Cooper at Glenn Street. And it's been a four way stop controlled intersection since two thousand and nine. And we we reviewed recently that intersection and the warrants for a multi way stop. And it doesn't meet the warrants. It doesn't have the collision data to support it. And it also doesn't have the vehicle volume. And so we're recommending that the stops on Cooper Avenue be removed. And we retain the stops on Glenn Street.
So I, and I'm going to throw out my question here, there was a reason to put it on in the first place. And and I think it said in the report that there weren't quite enough collisions, but there was. Some sort of need to put that four way stop in. Now we've put the four way stop in and we've eliminated. Virtually all accidents, and now you're wanting to remove it. It's it's a little concerning. What what was the impetus for? For bringing this forward, complaints?
We've observed it over several occasions, and then there was a. A traffic ticket handed out to a prior, I think, county engineer. A while back, and he came in asking about this intersection. And we looked through the data and in two thousand and nine, when it was put in, there were three collisions at the intersection in a five year period. And the threshold for a stop control is five collisions in a twelve month period. So as best we can tell, based on current standards. It doesn't meet, the data that was used at the time wouldn't warrant it at this time. Now, whether the warrant was misinterpreted at the time or the threshold has changed, I'm unsure.
May I speak, Chairman?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I I I cannot agree with this at all. Those streets around there, the bulk of them have nothing. I would be in favor of a lot more stop signs in that area because it is a lot of families. Unfortunately, we go back, I've asked you, you and I have had these questions in the past about putting up stop signs. And unfortunately, we never meet the threshold. We don't have a lot of people here, but that doesn't mean that our streets, especially back there, should be. You know, without stop signs. It's it's not very safe, in my opinion. And as the Chairman pointed out, we have them up there and it became, it made the area safe. And I certainly could not support removing them. And just the opposite, I wish we would look into the thresholds. And make them more designed to our area, not in California as a whole. Or wherever they come from. I'm not exactly sure where those thresholds are coming from, Rosanna, but. Yeah, I I think we need more stop signs in that area. I certainly would not be in support of removing any.
Yeah, and 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 I I'm kind of on the same page there. And in two thousand and nine. I was on the board and we must have had a reason for putting it up. Putting up the four way stop. I'm very reluctant to remove. Something that I'm assuming in the past eleven years, we've had no accidents, Rosanna. Is is that correct?
I only went back as far as five years because that's typically the window you would look at.
And there has, there have been no, no reported accidents.
There, there were none within that five year period.
Right, so, I mean, you know, we had three in a five year period before, back in two thousand and nine. And now we've had none. I I don't know that in good conscience I could. Support removing the stop signs at that intersection. Any other supervisors have comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Rosanna, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
What is the speed limit on, I believe it's thirty miles an hour. Can you confirm that all the way through Cooper, all the way to? To Inyo, is it thirty miles an hour?
That's what I recall. I don't think, I think it used to be thirty five and it's down to thirty, but I don't know between El Dorado and. Inyo, if it's thirty five. I think it all went down to thirty a couple of years back.
All right, so to me, traffic flow is very important, that there is a flow of traffic Cooper being a major thoroughfare. I'd like to make that motion to remove those stop signs on Cooper Avenue at Gun Street. As requested by your department, and I'll ask for a second for that.
Is there a second to that motion? Seeing no second to that motion fails.
Here, Hammington, can I, can I ask another question of staff?
Sure.
I, yeah, I'm scratching my head as as Supervisor Hammington and Supervisor Cowan have stated. Other than this, the new paving, what triggered this to come forward in the effort to be put out by community development to analyze? This intersection and more importantly, remove all stop signs?
This intersection, so it was brought to our attention by the prior county engineer who questioned the warrants for it. And then also discussions with the current county engineer as well as the road superintendent. And we were all in support of the recommendation. One thing that is a common misconception, and I tried to provide a document for some background on some of the. Concerns with multi way stops where they they shouldn't necessarily go. Is that people will speed between stop signs. So the more stop signs you put in, the the worse people's behavior gets. Is one of the things that has been found when. Warrants aren't met for multi way stops. So you also have the engine noise and the emissions and all of that sort of thing. But people do speed accelerate faster and whatnot when there's an unnecessary stop.
But Cooper, I mean, I could be wrong about this. But Cooper, I mean, I could be wrong about this, but it used to be a racetrack. And I know those intersections, specifically the stop sign placement, were, were put there to help slow things down. Whether they speed up between a short distance and want to burn fuel, that's behavioral issues that we're not going to change. But we could certainly help decrease accidents, as stated by Supervisor Hemmingson, which was the logic behind the two thousand and nine motion to place the signage there in the first place. I, as, again, Rosanna, I'm scratching my head why time was spent on this. And, uh, when, when there's not a lot of time to spend, so I'm asking the question again, what was the impetus for it other than staff came together and said, oh, we need to remove this? I mean, I'm, I'm looking for a deeper answer than what you're giving.
I would say that is the answer.
So what I'm hearing, Rosanna, is that somebody got a ticket and they came to you, is that correct?
Um, a few years back, it came up. I wasn't aware of that when we started this discussion recently about this stop sign, and then that was brought up.
Well, it's a neighborhood. It's all homes. It's children. It's, you know, people, kids walking home from school. I, I think it was, it's a bad decision.
Yeah, I, I, uh, you know, it, it's funny because we put, uh, because of, uh, Pacific Avenue uh, being a fairly long straight stretch and Cooper Avenue being a fairly long straight stretch, we put in four-way stops to help control the speed, uh, because people were speeding. They were doing, you know, forty, forty-five miles an hour in a thirty and thirty-five mile an hour zones. And, and my guess is that's what was happening on Cooper Avenue at the time. I don't recall. It's been a number of years ago, but, um, uh, and now, now you're saying that people race between stop signs, and, and that might very well be true. But, uh, I think the, uh, the idea of people going faster, the more straight, the long straight stretches, they have, I think they have a tendency to, to, get, go faster and faster. So, uh, the, the motion to approve this has failed. Uh, so we are going to move on unless there's further discussion. Public comment, Kylie?
Chair, I'm just gonna give it a few more seconds. And I am not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, so we are going to move on to budget transfers?
I'll make a motion to, we have quite a few of them here, uh, budget transfer zero-six-one-five, budget transfer zero-six-one-six, budget transfer zero-six-one-seven, budget transfers zero-six-two-three, and budget transfer zero-six-two-four. I make a motion to approve.
Did you say zero-six, that's one eight?
Oh, I did not. Thank you, Chair, and zero-six-one-eight.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. By Bob, was that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, any public comment on these budget transfers, Kylie?
I'm just gonna give it a little bit more time. Chair, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, any comments or question on the budget transfers from board members? Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, legislative and budget issues, Jay, anything?
Uh, quick update for the board. Um, nothing legislative at this point, although we are, um, reviewing different legislation that's coming through, uh, primarily looking at the CARES Act and CARES Act funding. The county has been allocated funding already, and because of some of the, uh, negotiations going on at the federal level, that could affect the allocation through the state. We are just not sure how that's going to be handled, um, and what the definition of allocation is by the state and the feds. Uh, but the executive orders that were passed, um, may have an effect on that money, which has an effect on our budget and how we balance. Um, and so we'll be watching that. The unfortunate part is because they haven't come to an agreement, uh, at the federal level, um, the timing could get stretched out into the fall and beyond when we have time to, uh, actually utilize any of that funding to offset costs of the pandemic response and also how that may affect our budget. But we will be following that. I will have, uh, updated, uh, budget report at the next meeting for the board in regards to, um, the CARES Act and the other two bills that are being, uh, proposed at this point. I'm hoping for some movement on that, but, uh, that doesn't look good at this point. So we will be going forward with, uh, the budget team. Year-end is just closed. We'll be taking those numbers from the auditor's office and, and, uh, looking at what the gap is that we have to close. And then in September, we will have a balanced budget before the board. But I do plan on having an updated report. I was hoping it would be much more detailed than what I believe I'm going to be able to present to you now because, um, because of this change in regards to the CARES Act funding, so. We'll continue to monitor it and we will update the board at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, legislative or budget issues, uh, from board members? Kylie, did we hit everything?
Yes, we did.
All right, with that, uh, we will adjourn at the next meeting, August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. See you then.
Great week. Thank you.